To the flag on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get this meeting going. First up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to approve the consent.
Move and seconded any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next up is approving a letter of support for the Hank Coe Yellowstone Regional Airport Terminal. We've, this is something that we've been working on. Mayor Hall has been, we're doing more than I have, but we put in front of the board and we proposed at the terminal, not the airport. It's renamed after the Lake Center Hank Coe. Have we gotten a letter built yet or are we just approving?
I figured that was the chairman's job.
Chairman's job? Well, the chairman's job is to lead and to delegate.
Oh, okay.
So, what's, what you're going to start?
I'm all in favor, you know, and I haven't talked to Matt since I went back, but I talked to him the day before he left. And the problem they were having is the airport board had decided that they don't have authority over the building. They've put it off on the city council, but there's still some, some difference of opinion that actually who owns ownership to that building. I don't know the answer to that. And Matt was having a city attorney research. But the way it stands right now, it looks like city council, it's an answer to the city council, has the authority to name the door.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have a problem with it at all. I think Hank did quite a bit for their work out there. And this is just a letter of support. It's not our decision, but I supported the building, the terminal, terminal, not airport. But I was, I did ask it and has no name that's there right now. And it's just a regulation, so I, I would support it.
Mr. Chairman, talking to the mayor Hall, he is unquestioned, he is, or his will is the authority on renaming it. So they're going to actually put it up before the county city council, that he sent a letter of, on the county commissioners, we certainly helped.
Yeah, I, you know, I told Matt that if people like me come to that meeting to testify, I sure would. You know, when you stop to think about it, Hank Coe, his role as a commissioner and as a private citizen, a manager of the library, it doesn't warrant for commercial aviation to stay away from any person I know of.
Especially Park County.
Yeah.
So here most.
So move.
Second. Move and seconded to write a letter of support for renaming the airport terminal after Hank Coe. Further discussion?
Yeah, I got one, one point of discussion. Mr. Chairman, when you draft the letter. You know, maybe students can do a little research about all the different air, aeronautics committees he was on and how many. He was one of the founders of CY Air.
Yep. I've got, I've got a little bit of one already. I drafted one to the airport board a little bit in front of them, so I will advise that.
I'm gonna, I will tell everyone who'll be up front right now, I was put down as a recommendation. Plan one, so I will not, hopefully I'm not voting, but I won't vote if it comes to that.
And the consensus with the selection committee also, is that why we, we definitely prefer Plan One because of the arch access and Jeff Davis connection? We also understand there's, there's some back history and so the consensus was that if the county commissioners felt that that was the right choice for us, we would be fine with our second choice.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept Plan One as for the design of the library system.
Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second. Where would you guys like to go? So what do, just for clarification, Karen, the, the order that they came in was Plan One? And then GSG and then Eric?
Yes, and there was just, no, I mean, a couple of points difference between all of them.
So what we would actually have been doing is approving the entire recommendation of the, of the board in the order that you would approve it.
And of course, the board, the selection committee also, you know, Cox wasn't the director, as we had seen with Cox, so. I think the consensus too, and which I know with this process, it's, we can't actually see the cost of all three. If our second choice came in way less than the first choice, then you go with your second, you know, and, and so on. So we did feel comfortable with any of the three, because the architects said we're good.
Who's the number two?
GSG, right?
Yes.
GSG?
GSG Architects, they actually have a, like a Casper office in Cheyenne, Casper.
They do a lot of work for the University of Wyoming.
When they were first opened with the bids, they listed really Colorado, but that was the address that the thing was mailed from.
Oh, okay.
Their offices in Wyoming.
The chairman, I'll move me through them. Second to approve GSG as the design firm for the Park County Library. Is that based on negotiations?
Right.
Yes. Would that count? Okay, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just the, the point of the, using the library board as the actual recommendation. They have gone through for the session now, so just to let you know, I'll probably be a no vote on that since the library board did recommend the first plan.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries to work for GSG. Negotiate with GSG, yes. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So then they just get this and they get nothing else?
Is that GSG?
Yes. And then I just hang on to the other two?
Okay, very much.
Thank you. You're like, oh. Too much.
Up next, we got Park County Treasurer Bart Polley with a Park County Revenue Review.
Good morning, Lord. I did the best I can. We're still in the process of balancing this morning. We have some little computers, so we're gonna do our best. I just barely set up one spreadsheet. Did you guys get it?
Well, I barely set up?
Barely, like, five minutes ago.
Yeah, I just got it.
Okay, thanks, guys. Sorry for the delay. We were trying to get as much updated as we could. Just giving you an overview of the registrations and all that. The actual registration fees are down a little bit from last year. I think the reason behind that is we have a lot of people moving in more than some last year than right now. A number of transactions have gone up and the sales tax, you know, of course, is coming up also. Sometimes these reports, you can't really figure out what, what's driving them. Sales tax transactions has gone up and the number of renewal cards went up over 272. Last year, of course, that's what's mailed out and that doesn't always mean those vehicles will get renewed. Our system on that, they will mail them out one more time. If you don't commit a renewal, they fall off. Property taxes are down a little bit year over year from last year, but we know that the projections for taxes are down. You know, what Pat projects was down from last year, so we're right on track. We've collected longer taxes. We sent out about 2,000 delinquents last week, so just heads up on that. Also, the last payment of the mineral taxes, of course, is not due until June, so we still have taxes that way come in. So we're right on course for our budget, I believe, on all of that. Any questions? The revenue's about 2.4 over right now. Then projected, a lot of that is, of course, the COVID care. Funds, 1.4 of it that came back in and then, of course, the 600 goes on the revenue side. It did a big expense back out, but that's in there. And the 189, so right there is about 2 million of what we're over on our revenue, but you gotta keep in mind, we have another full year, full month to collect. So we're looking really good on the revenue side. I ran over and talked to Steve real quick to see what kind of expenses were going out. You know, it's really hard to just find out who's spending what in the last month, so he figures we'll have about a half million to give back in the overall budget on top of everything else. So the budgets are looking really good for this fiscal year.
I think that was predicted by former chairman Tilden, we would probably be in good shape this year.
Yep, and the sales and use that's on, you know, compared to this time last year, you know, like I said, we're, we're right on budget and we still have. So any questions, you guys, that I can answer? We still have quite a bit of the rents coming in, the training fees have to come in yet, so we have revenue that's still coming in.
Yes, one quick question, that 2 million additional revenue we have this year, that 1.4 pairs money, that's part of that, right?
Correct. So, yeah, we have 1.4, the 600,000 and 189.
Explain what the 600,000 was.
The 600,000 was the reimbursable that you guys gave back to the nonprofit, so there, there's an expense, so I said that, but it is in the revenue side.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way to separate there's that money, recovery money, so that we can get more of a example, a true example of what actually is each year without the government extra paper money coming in?
We can do that on our under cover, so we do monthly for you guys. We can break it down. They each have their own line item in the general ledger, so it's broken down that way, but if you'd like to have it on our overall cover sheet, we sure could do that. Going forward, it might not be done this month because Carrie is in the process, but we can sure add. So would you like not the 600, but the other two that we received or what exactly?
I mean, it's gone.
And of course, if we get those other funds, we can sure actually do that.
2.8, it's in our ways, so. I agree with Mr. Mankel, it'd be just nice to see what, what a real, a real view is.
Yeah, we can sure do that. Anything else you guys need? Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah, the office is really busy. Actually, we're coming in at seven every morning, just to keep up right now. You know, just.
Why are you starting to like?
Actually, it was 6:30 this morning, but they're just doing enough to keep up. They're really outstanding staff. They're working for comp time right now, but Biden's been in at seven for the last two weeks, so we'll look forward and tell if we can get a grip on this, because I don't know if it's gonna continue or, you know, that we need additional staff sometime during lunches. I just don't know. So right now, I'd rather do what we have, but it's amazing how busy that office is. Anything else? And I'll send up the reports once we're getting done, you guys. We just had some stuff this morning. Computers decide not to, we have to leave it or something, I don't know.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, next up, we have a public hearing at 10:20. So we got, anything else?
Yes.
I mean, can I say? Smoking your gun. Been smoking a garter?
No, you can't. I'll get by that.
We haven't heard about staffing, you should go. Everybody seems to have a staffing situation. We're doing pretty damn good with our staffing one.
Thank you.
I notice they want to push, push on the HR stuff on you now, too. Can I raise your hand for that?
I do have some suggestions about, as you guys move forward with your budget, just because of, I, I've been looking at PTO sites very and how you can, how you can do, since you have the extra revenue at this point, I would project a five-year picture of what your salary base would be moving forward and then I think you guys need to look at the sick time payout that we're paying as people are leaving here and rolling that into the salary base as you look at that and how we can do PTO. I, I've actually outlined it.
Good.
Really easy to do. The only thing is, is if you start it, you would start it January 1st. You'd have so many hours that they could have that they could roll in, okay? But the rest of it, you may want to pay out at this time.
I see what you're saying. Just get it off the books.
Yeah, Steve and I looked at the numbers. He said he was looking at like 375 to 400,000 that would be paid out. So it, it's something to think about, because these people are accruing this time every year and you're paying a percentage of that on sick time. If you roll it into PTO, because to me, sick time should have been capped on kind of like.
It is at 7:20.
You know, it shouldn't have been capped way lower than that. That's just my opinion. And I think the don't even time needs to go away. This is just my opinion as an employee and working HR. And then you rewrite the policy in your handbook and people just, you could start having meetings in October with the employees telling them, this is how we're going to do this. And they, they understand it and rolling forward, they would understand. But each year, they can roll over so many hours, they use it or lose it.
Why don't we just start it on, on January 1st and not July 1st, what new budget comes in?
Well, I don't know if we have it ready by that time.
I see what you're saying.
I don't think we, we, there's no way we could be ready by July 1st this year. I mean, we could be ready by July 1st next year for sure, but. So the end, and I don't know, does it matter? I don't think it matters that it runs consecutive with the budget year.
No.
Does it? I, I don't think it does.
But if you're gonna do that and then you're thinking about, the only reason I said that is because of healthcare, if you're gonna start that. You know, that gives people the window to, you know, say, especially when open enrollment for most companies starts in October and that's your chance to jump onto the insurance if you're, your spouse stopped that insurance, not that you can't. It gives them an eligible reason to come on the insurance, but it makes it a lot easier for people to make those changes.
And they will remember.
Right, yep. So just, just my thoughts.
Yeah, I just, if we give that department, and I think if, if we can offer some form of I mean, I know we pay out on the sick leave and, and I think we just have a lot of people out there that are maxed out or close to max. And as we've seen over the last several years, what happens is they end up using all their sick leave, then we still pay them all their vacation. And I don't know, maybe even the max on the vacation needs to be cut back. Maybe you shouldn't be able to carry 240 over. I mean, if you go to PTO, it's less, isn't it?
Yeah, well, you, they wouldn't have that anymore.
But we would allow so much PTO to carry over.
Yes, but they use it or lose it.
Yeah.
So each year, the department head starts their budget, they're gonna know exactly, okay, everybody has a hundred dollars rolling into their salary. But I have some idea of what I'm gonna be paying somebody out if they leave. You understand what I'm saying? Because they're accruing that time, right? So they know in their budget, but they have, they have something when they leave. Sure makes it a lot easier for them.
But then are you projecting your budget properly? I don't think you are. I don't know. Would you be?
If you have.
Sure.
Because you have no idea who's gonna be leaving, so why are you projecting them extra dollars?
Gotta think about that.
Do you see what I'm saying? Do you see where I'm thinking? I'm, I'm just not sure that you.
But you're projecting as a liability.
Yeah.
Potential liability.
Right, right. And that is something that unfortunately in the corporate, we use to put that pool in a, that carry firm every year.
Yeah, see, government, government, I think that's falsifying the documents. When you project that something's gonna happen, because in government, I don't believe that's to the best interest of your constituents, that you project those funds being spent. It would, it would look like we were padding a budget instead of projecting what the true costs are.
We can always ask that question.
Yeah.
We can always ask that question.
And maybe that's a question for Jason, our auditor.
See, that doesn't make sense to me, because your commissioners are trying to meet a budget and a revenue increasing. I don't.
But you're not being, it's not true dollars.
But if you're not using it, it rolls over every year.
But can, but then you're padding a budget. So that's where constituents, I think, would come down on us, is we're not projecting true dollars. Because a government budget's different than a corporate budget.
Right.
And you can't project what's gonna happen that doesn't happen. For corporate, they can, because they'll just spend it elsewhere, do whatever. I don't, I don't know if you can, I, I don't know. I have to do some checking. That would be my only concern on projecting that. Because like right now, we don't project what we're gonna pay out for vacation.
But couldn't that, so we have to recognize, we have to recognize the retirement fund as a, as a liability.
As a liability.
So why, why would we not recognize the, the, you know, the potential payout of vacation? Or anything like that as a potential.
Well, well, we already do, because every employee is based on 2080 a year. Whether they work it or they don't work it, whether it's vacation, sick, or whatever, every employee is based on 2080 a year. So we're already projecting that. It's in the budget. So whether they're working it or whether we're paying it out as sick, I mean, it's still in their budget.
Gotcha. It's all about what bakery. Tell you that when they leave.
It, it's only when, when they leave and I don't, like I said, I don't know, can you as a government entity produce something that may not happen? I mean.
Water District Auditorium had me carry a line item that had 20 or 30,000 dollars in there just as a liability, just in case.
See, and we may already do that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, every employee is figured on the basis of 28, whether it be worked or not worked, whether it be sick leave or vacation, you know, payers, 28. That's how many hours are in a year.
Well, that may be a fault of the government, because if we don't start looking at a five-year projection of the revenue going down and what, how we're gonna pay our employees, that's gonna be a detriment to us. See, that's where I have a problem that I've had since I came here. I struggle with that.
But that's government.
But in, but.
It's always been government.
I know, but.
You make more than I did when I worked two, 30 years. You make more than I do.
I know, but people in the county better start understanding it. Instead of complaining, they're just understanding it.
And that's, that's exactly why I said that, that, you know, the long sheet of the 20-year history of, of COLA and, and SAVs and bonuses and things like that, and there's no consistency to any of that. And it's difficult as hell, but somehow we, and, but we can look at our track record for revenue and we know damn well that's going down like this and we're trying to keep up with inflation this way if we crossed three years ago.
See, I think you should let your budget together. I think you should have Steve run the numbers of three steps for each employee. You have that lump sum money over in there, they can do whatever they want to. The department has with that money, we can either give it or get another employee at the end of the year. I think that's the way it should be at the end, and as you do your budget each year, you should stay.
I totally agree with you, but I'm trying to, I also want to tell you, I would be more than willing to do a percentage thing.
Yeah. Right, it's a state thing. You're just putting a lump, but you may have.
Just grab a number, say 4% instead of 4% COLA, you get 2% COLA, 2%.
And you don't, and the department, you're not using or using.
But. But that can skew.
That what?
That can skew your base scale when you do it on percentage basis.
Well, so you want to base everything, I, so, okay, convert it percentage from steps there.
And that's kind of what we were trying to do this year with the map. Sure, we were a little.
But it's gonna, but it needs to, in reality, the revenue is based on the steps. So we gotta base it on the percentage, so convert whatever it comes up to. One, one step COLA, one step. Whatever that, you know.
Yeah, we could do it that way.
I would like, unlike you, I would rather see just two steps to the department head and cross the board based on the bottom end, not the top end. Where not everybody. I would support that, that way, and there would be consistency throughout. And if we happen to get a oil boom here, we got good revenue coming in, we can still entertain bonuses. But that way, then each department knows as we go forward and we just have to adjust every year based on the inclining revenue of things that we give up until the public realizes we're giving up services we don't own. And then maybe they'd be willing to kick it out. Yeah, I'm just saying, that, to me, it's step back, it's pretty easy.
And, and.
It's just not gonna make everybody happy.
It's easier when you're inside it and you've done all the homework. It's pretty tough when you're sitting outside.
Well, you see, like, Colleen and Barb and these guys, you know, struggling. I can see how busy they are down there. It's crazy. I mean, Friday, Barb's office was just not, so, I, I mean, it's just, I can see where they need the additional help and you know, they may decide not to give everybody, and increase and hire another employee. They can take that money and do that. I don't know, but there's gotta be an answer somewhere. It makes it easier for everybody.
Well, the other thing is, I don't think the public realizes that they, of course, what happens in those offices is all required by statute.
And that's, but not all the offices, so then you have to go back to the.
All three of those. They're treasure necessary. Everything they do in that way.
So then you start cutting out special funding, building a bridge, building a grounds, all the departments that aren't required by statute to fund, and that's when it affects very much at some point. I mean, what else to do? Our job is to ask to balance at the end of the day.
Exactly.
Well, it's, it seems like we're trying to put like a, a regular, you know, this policy will fix this. You run into, like with Mike's group at IT, I'm sure you've got plenty of employees that have that, but, I mean, you've got people that are going to special classes, learning about IT and all that stuff. There's, there's a big employment pool. Some of these other groups, there is not an employment pool, like, like Scott Stewart's group. So we're looking at sort of an overall, here's our policy of the county, but it's gonna have to be, come down to each department saying, we need to reward this person just to keep him. And then, you know, I, I like what they're doing, you know, as far as, you know, you got a staff, you got a COLA and all this other stuff, but I think eventually we're gonna have to go, each department, look at it different. Give them more of a process to, to hire good people or to hire aging people, I think was what we're gonna end up being.
But you also, with that, I agree with you, you need consistency, so at least the department knows that you're, because I did.
Well, the other problem is agreements between the department heads and elected officials, because that's not always
No.
easy to come by.
Just to say, in a certain sense, we got that, and we still got a little bit of, kind of, you know, you and Joe worked down at the WCCA and I just wanted to get through a quick, I guess, that all ready with others, so at least my perspective. And the three main topics basically were, you know, of course, the federal restrictions on, on public plans as far as growing and things like that. Another great concern is the 30 by 30 rule that they, they're trying to enforce. And then the third thing, which we can maybe, those are two big I, we're watching and we're supporting our legislators, but the the ARPS money is the third thing that was a big issue. One thing that brought up, and I, I don't know if Scott was still there at the end, but it was kind of feeling out, but it was finally discussed about possibly going with the WCCA to employ a grant manager for the ARPS money or at least cooling areas such as the outdoors base. The one thing that was revealed that I thought was good is we can take ARPS money to pay for management services. It's gonna be, you're gonna need a damn near a full-time grant writer or a person in charge to get through all of that. And this is very good, just like calling here, because some counties are pushing it all down on their clerks. And I don't think that's fair with the office, the workload that she already has. So if, if Park County gave 5.6 million dollars, basically, we can take 1% or whatever, maybe kick it into the WCCA, they hired two or three to just over that. And then once their, once this money's allocated and spent correctly and applications and forms are all spent outright, they know they're out like a contract service. So that's an idea that we, it really didn't have enough consensus there to put it through a boat. So it's not decided.
Well, we left it with Jeremiah doing a little research as far as the employment part and the desires around the state. I also talked to Tom Ryan with Hot Springs and Big One was there in Washington. So if WCCA doesn't do it, those other three are interested in us doing it as part of the state.
Because Park County may not be able to justify a full time.
Right. But, yeah. And, and having somebody that, that, well, we have a little more coming in than those other three counties, so it would be a proportionate pay, but, in my mind. But, but it would, that person with that education level, once they understand all that works, is gonna be so important. And reporting, what, quarterly at a minimum from what they said, so that's gonna be a lot of work for a while, depending on the projects. I mean, if we do a couple of big ones, then that helps, but if you're doing a bunch of.
We want to take this, we're a company, we want to take it all.
You know, she already made the comment that she.
We did so much.
No, like Barb sent an email that, can you guys please hire somebody to take care of this? After they watched the video, they were online with us from down there. But that was a great conversation, but Jeremiah hasn't sent anything back yet.
Anything else that was made in progress?
No, I thought it was interesting, our last two conversations, you know, with, we were online with USDA and, you know, BLM. Deputy Director out of Denver and USDA in Washington, that was quite a, kind of a one-sided conversation from, from Wyoming about our beliefs in their, well, the BLM, how tough they're, you know, it takes 18 months to get a permit to cross, you know, a quarter mile on a dirt road and yet, you know, we have to go through all this. So we go around and disturb that much more land.
Yes.
What do we gain, you know, and how come your processes have to be this way?
My feeling from the director of that, that she's not gonna be wanting to help us.
Not the BLM, the USDA.
Of course, USDA, yes.
Yeah.
But my feeling, you know, listening to her live, the BLM director is.
Well, and, and the same thing during the broadcast meeting, talking about those characters and things, did that was the kind of thing to say about BLM.
Airblazing Man, yeah. The one that's right, we can't be gender specific anymore.
I thought it was black lesbian.
But, yeah, I'm sorry, Jase. But, yeah, it was, it was a good conference, but those one calls were, were enlightening a little bit on, on the attitudes and.
I do want to make note with the press here that it's our local BLM office, we, we're terrific. We get along great with them.
They're awesome.
No, they are.
They let us down under their end, they have garbage.
Well, I don't want to say that, because they'll probably all get moved out if they find out that they actually work well with the law.
Yeah, if you're working well with that program, you're, you're gonna be. All right. No, I probably will. Yes, I do thank you.
Another thing too that popped up was, remember when the governor was speaking, how he entered at 3:30? An article in the Times, that he was born.
Parts of it.
Parts of it.
I got you reading it a little closer, it was parts of it at least, because that wasn't the same thing you said.
I think it was the second.
Yeah, that isn't what you said, 40 to 10.
No. Should've seen the private, that, that he served, you know, oh, it was, they gave you half a cow each.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
But that, they can, it took up the entire, I told him just part of that. And so he cuts the fat off, he goes, oh, you can eat that much. I went, oh crap, that's more than I eat.
They gave me an empty, so it was not that big, but ended up with, I think it was meat toxicity, though.
Yeah.
I didn't go home.
Well, did you learn anything, though?
There was some good stuff. There was some good stuff, um, like you said, the broadband meeting was pretty good, finding out what we're doing, what those carriers are doing, and what the possibilities are, that was in the committee meetings. Board meeting was just financial for the budget for WCCA for the year, I did that on Wednesday.
Josh, you got stuck with the committee.
I'm supposed to be co-chair with Phil Sheel at Hot Springs. Well, Phil forgot to call me that he wouldn't come. So Kelly comes over and gives me this folder, and says, you gotta run that meeting, or you, or puts the folder down, I said, what's that for? She goes, well, Phil called you, like, don't you, yeah, you're running the committee meetings after. Oh, thank you, very much. Had Secretary of State Buchanan on there, talking about the HR ones with the election law, and he wrote a letter from WCCA against that one. And then, um, and then we had the three or four broadband guys, and then we had Luke Ash from DEQ from Industrial Society. So, yeah, we had plenty going on, it was about three hours in the committee meeting, so, yeah. But there was some, there was some interesting things.
Yeah, that, that happened to me, I think with a, I think it was the first year I was in the commission, I got put on as vice chair of the Public Land Committee down there. And I keep track of it, and he never told me we weren't gonna be there, so I would, you know, five minutes before I was supposed to give my report, I'd say, well, you gotta get up, and I'd say, oh, what?
Well, then I found out I had to do the report the next morning in front of the group, and I'm like, oh, great, okay, bye. No, it was, and it was pretty well attended. No, I think, um, you know.
Well, I'm sorry, I appreciate you, but I don't have a.
You were having a good time fishing, yeah.
Did you catch a lot?
Got a lot of fish, yeah.
Good, good. Did you have a car?
You could have had, I mean, maybe I got fish.
And you got a car, a rental car? Did you get a rental car?
The rental car?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, the fact that we even upgraded them, is a really weird deal.
Yeah, it was a billing last weekend.
I heard, I listened to your report.
Week after that, a lot of them were.
That's for Jeff and Gene, Albert. We were down there, anyway, that's where they're.
The governor, I guess they. You go to the, no, we're, still gotta wear masks.
You know, I have no idea, I was there the whole time. Yeah. Been a couple days, I was a nervous guy. So, you can't see how maybe.
I probably left. Well, I know, the guy who runs that.
Pretty good. Once you're a good brewer, then you get equal time to steal.
Oh, yeah.
So I get to spend
Yeah, from what I, they say, I mean, just wrong still. He stayed till. Four years of this, I guess it's been called out, I'm not sure. But that would be hard, I mean, to go from fifteen thousand or something, few short years.
Not them oil rares would want that. Especially with all their disposable money that they have. Thanks, car lots. All those guys with, all those twenty-one-year-olds, a lot of money.
So where do you go?
Yeah, people wanna buy cars. Sort of like that. Living in great halls, you put the car lots next to the air force. Eighteen-year-olds who love, like, fast cars. And motorcycle shops, all right next to the gate, cars and motorcycle shops.
Yeah, you could ask, but I don't. They don't have that on the. From last Friday.
It was about the water tank.
Do you understand that? I've done it like three times, and I didn't, I never, I didn't understand.
From the DEQ.
From the State Engineers.
Was paper the highway one?
I, you know, I don't, I don't know. I didn't sign anything, if there's anything that you're pointing on that one yet, I don't know, it's just coming down the pipe or what. I don't remember. Patriot subdivision.
I don't remember that.
Didn't have staff meeting today, so.
And I don't remember, I went through my notes, and I, Joyce never talked about leaders, so.
Well, that letter, basically, from the State Engineers office, I didn't understand it.
They said no to the, the DEQ water.
I'm glad these guys didn't, Joe, you had a chance to read that letter from the State Engineers office last Friday, email?
That was in your mail. Yeah, I, I didn't know who it was.
I haven't counted. Doesn't make any sense.
I think you're right, it all ended very end, and we were going to say, oh.
Well, in summary, at the end, it's, we don't, we don't support this. I'm like, but you don't support it because of you're saying they've already done, I don't understand what.
Yeah.
Just they meant. They have not filed for.
Yeah, see, I, I didn't find anything for Joyce saying anything about yous. I, I was. And he said the wrong.
I'm glad, just I thought it was.
No, it wasn't. It's the North Act of Kobe stuff over there, it wasn't how. The new Kobe stuff is.
Yeah.
Yes, the North Act, it's the new section of that.
Absolutely.
Now we know where it is, but.
She's looking, she's not sure they got the letter. Did it come direct to you?
Yeah, it came to you first.
It was addressed to the commission.
Right, but Julie went, oh, yeah, got it. So she's checking.
I'm confused on why, on their point, it's a whole damn weather.
They don't like the idea of having roads right there. Oh, it's, then they know we aren't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you.
True. But I think they're, they look at it under a, understand it individually, but they're looking at it on a group basis. Serve each lot.
Why, so, some will argue that I don't.
They're hooked on Northwest Water.
Well, on that one, yeah.
So that's my point, so what's the matter?
But my question is, how is Northwest Water being handled?
Because, um, that, that main line is where they tied in Northwest.
Their capacity is.
Yeah, we have that capacity because they, they backed it, there's a huge tankhouse right there.
I loved it.
And then when they brought out North End.
We put in, we connected.
They, they put a whole new line up, broke in.
But we added that.
I don't know, all I know is that, that if subdivision can be served by Northwest Water, why is the State Engineers close to it, based on wells that may or may not be built, because each well needs to be ready to begin with. And if our water rights, they've already requested to relinquish.
If they relinquish their water rights, does that get rid of their ability to do that? If it's a surface well?
No, but relinquish the water rights.
Oh, wow.
No. No, it's been done, finished, finished probably there.
So I'm writing copies of well, yeah, B and L just because with these final plats, you know, if they ask us anything about it, and it's, I wouldn't use it. So we might be able to look it up real quick.
I'm trying to be.
You know, and, and it ain't nothing, no, it's not, no, it's only that the whole. That's a problem, final project, you know, by B and L, we live with all that stuff.
Yeah.
And I can't, I don't move for long, probably, too, you know. Yeah, that would, that would.
Where we ran into, you know.
Yeah, her survey, or whoever, she's.
She's gonna be here all day, she's comfortable now.
Well, we're only gonna be here two weeks.
Tell me, don't get too comfortable.
Can you resend the link to him?
I forwarded an email that he was.
Okay, because she didn't have anybody.
Yeah.
Is this your survey, explaining who's joining, trying to join?
Yeah, just the sketch plan, yeah, really, the only thing's attached to that new sketch plan is the irrigation utilities. I told Julie that, you know, Winchester was going up for school, and I was.
I know. That's the one that's, she and Brian were pretty.
Yeah, so I can speak in general about final plan things, but.
Words are words.
I know, there's a lot, there's a lot in there, a lot of revolutions.
Those big subdivisions are tough.
Yeah.
Didn't they ever find out that about CenturyLink providing service with ServiceNet? In the internet? Or is it just phone service?
Didn't find that, didn't follow up with that, you know. It just, it's just CenturyLink. Yeah, because.
If I was the last meeting with you, we got a letter from CenturyLink saying they can provide service, what service is that? Does telephone work, is it actual internet?
Which subdivision do you remember?
I'll take a quick one. That's why the question came up. If that was internet included, if you're having a live discussion.
Yeah, because we don't hear much about CenturyLink at all.
What else was it, you had a live joint with Rodriguez? Or did you look at? Get you a tour of just that, we're gonna do our local area, so, but I wanted to get out there before Paul got there. Oh, great, thanks. I'll just tell Paul that we. Yeah, then he'll call me, so. I think, yeah, he'll show you a different place, and he'll show you the over, and see how the road is.
Well, it'd be nice to ask them, you know, I guess questions like that.
Right, you said that, if you're, if you're the over, it's just gonna take select pieces, but. County side, they gotta deal with. Got all kinds of metal out here.
Yes. But they don't find us who like it, it's all.
All right. Ten twenty, are we gonna, we waiting on? Yeah, we're gonna move forward with the public, continuance of a public hearing on the Meadowflower Minor Subdivision. Take it away, Yom Patty.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman, so the applicant for this project is to build properties, is the properties located in GRP zoning district defending its power. We did receive an application for this minor subdivision on May third of this year, including payment description, sketch plan, copied notice of intent to subdivide. We, and we did receive a revised sketch plan, as you remember, which now the revised sketch plan is shown in figure one, we received that on May eighteenth. Of course, May eighteenth was the original public hearing, and, um, the commissioners voted to continue that because we had just received that revised sketch plan before anyone had a chance to look at it. The applicant requests approval of this five-block miner, one lot will be just over nine acres, one lot will be seven point seven three acres, one lot is eight point eight nine acres, and one lot six point four two acres, and one lot is three point seven acres, all will be for residential use. This property is, is shown in figure two, and it's located approximately two point two miles east of Powell. It's on the north side of County Lane eight and a half. The parcel is currently unaddressed, as I mentioned, in sketch, um, in figure one is the sketch plan on page three. This is in the GRP zoning district, these lots as proposed are consistent with that neighboring land use in figure three, that is shown. This land, this, this parcel is surrounded primarily by agriculture uses. There are some subdivisions to the south and southeast. In terms of site characteristics, the parcel is vacant, it's irrigated, most of it's irrigated land. Most of the topography is flat, proposed lot five does rest at a higher elevation compared to the other four lots, and you can see that both in figure two and figure three. Terms of notices, the notice of intent, the subdivision was in the Power Tribune, that occurred in January twenty-sixth and February second of this year. This is a public hearing, and so the notice of public hearing was in the newspaper that was also the Power Tribune, April twenty-ninth and May eleventh were those dates. And we sent a notice out to neighboring property owners, that notice went out April thirtieth of this year. Agency referrals, you see a list of all the agencies that we noticed, most of those responded. Rocky Mountain Power, in terms of electricity, we received it, um, two responses. The latest that they have the capacity of to serve the proposed five lots, and they do have, um, electricity, I think it's shown in those photos, you can see electricity lines, but they do have electricity along that county road. Shoshone Irrigation District, they responded, so they have, obviously, they have been notified. They will require a water distribution plant, I guess to our knowledge, um, we don't know if that's been submitted yet, but we know it's, if it has been submitted, it's not been approved. Also service, they can provide mail service. Park County Wheaton Pass Mary did initial inspection, found the presence of noxious weeds. As a result, a management plan will be required. Again, to our knowledge, that has not been approved. Um, TCT said they have wireless internet and phone service available to this, to these lots, this location. Park County Fire District one said they can provide fire protection, and this is in their district. MBU stated they have a gas line on the, on the north side of Lane eight and a half. And they can essentially provide service to all lots. And they talked about the utility use for the lots that will be, um, not located along the road. Park County School District one, they have bus service available. Treasurer said property taxes are paid in full, Gaiman Fish responded. They're, lately, kind of their typical response, that the cumulative effect of these subdivisions may have the potential to negatively impact the yield of their populations. Powell Parks for Conservation District, they provided us with the. Powell Parks for Conservation District, they provided us with a report, a summarization letter, they found seven soils on the property. Public Works responded. Their initial response, end of April, they, which we shared with you, they had comments regarding access traffic in the subdivision road and a runoff and erosion control plan. They responded again on May twentieth after they looked at the revised sketch plan, and they had no concerns with that. And I should mention, I, I think maybe somewhere in the report, we maybe mentioned that, but that revised sketch plan, I believe the only revision that was where it showed irrigation use and utility use. Planning and zoning looked at this sketch plan on April twenty first, they recommended approval, they had some conditions. I'll just mention some that have not been met yet. They, one condition was that erosion control plan be provided and evidence of right of way permits, that has not been met yet. Also, another condition was the draft Homer Association Agreement, that has been, not been met yet. There was, and I'll talk about this more, but there was, according to P and Z, a note to be placed on the final plan addressing water quality. There was a new water quality sample that was submitted, and so that condition has not been met. There was a pre-op meeting for this that occurred October seventh of last year. Fee was paid. There is a title report with the date of November of last year, that's been submitted. A road, as you can surmise, a road is proposed that will access lots one, two, three, and four. Applicant will present three road names to Public Works Office. Proposed lot five will have direct access from the county road. And of course, of course, sketch plan, one of our conditions is that we, we know the entities who are responsible for road construction or road maintenance and snow removal. So that will occur, that road maintenance will occur. Garbage disposal is available through private companies, like always. In terms of hazards on this property, we know of none. Sketch plan, obviously, revised one was submitted on May eighteenth, you had a chance to see that, it had all the things listed, bottom of page nine, top of page ten. Subcertain evaluation was done, that happened in December of last year, perk tests were done on lots one, three, and four. Perk rates were twenty one, fourteen, and thirteen, which are already reasonable. Excavation cuts were made on those same lots. Depths nine, eight and a half, and nine feet, no groundwater to dispose. Based on that, it appears like conventional septic systems will be, will be likely, should this be approved. Domestic water. The applicant is proposing individual wells to utilize, and a water sample was collected from a well at five twenty seven, Lane eight and a half, January fourth. That analysis found the presence of coliform. I'll go on, TDS was at seven eighty four, which is above the maximum contamination level of five hundred perch per million, however, again, that's a secondary standard. It means the water's cloudy, it might have an odor. Nitrogen was detected at two and a half perch per million, which is below the cutoff of ten. Lead was not detected. Chloride and chloride and sulfate were also detected, however, those levels were below maximum contaminant levels, those are also secondary standards. The applicant did provide an updated water analysis from that same water well, and that analysis found no E, no E. coli and no coliform. So based on that, the water is.
If I could real quick, is that unusual? Or do you have water levels from the same well, do you have that difference?
No, you know, I don't think so. I, I think, I'm not sure the reasons why, but it, it's not uncommon that coliform or E. coli is detected in water samples. You know, it could be hydra, it could be from a, from a hose. So it does, it does happen.
So I mean, just along the lines, I, I've had wells tested and then just treat the well. You treat the well and retest after it's been treated.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah. So the, the latest, the latest indications are that the water is, the water is safe. Ag impacts, there on the top of page thirteen, the applicant has some statements regarding what the ag impacts would be. Of course, should this subdivision be approved, a good portion of it is currently in production ag, that will, of course, come out of production ag. It will be expected to comply with meat and pest. The subdivision is not expected to introduce any pest or litter problems or pet disturbances to livestock. They will be expected to follow irrigation district rules. And so, given that, the nature of this subdivision, its existence is not expected to impact negatively neighboring ag operations. Water rights, again, Shoshone Irrigation District is where this is located. They will, they do require, we require a water distribution plan, to our knowledge, that's not been submitted yet, because it says a minor, no state review is required in regard to irrigation. Rest of our report has approval standards, we have some findings, and we have some recommended conditions, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Just a minute, the, the proof of local access, is that proof come from the county then, or?
Okay, yeah, it will. And, and because, you know, what, three, four of these lots are actually going to have a road? And so I think in here we talked about, you know, a subdivision improvement agreement coming along, and that road being to public work standard. So I'm assuming with that, the right of way will be, will be approved.
Since this is a public hearing, any comments from the public? Don't see any comments from the public.
Second.
Then second, closed public hearing for the discussion. Close the favor. What's your pleasure? Move to second to approve the, of the sketch plan for Meadowflower Minor Subdivision for the discussion. Favor?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, we got plenty of time, but you're sitting there and we can keep, we can roll right on into the next one.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, the next one for your consideration is a final platform view, and this one is B. B, simple subdivision, the applicant is Shane Larson. This property is located in a GR five zone, or in the GR five zoning district, the planning area is Lower South Fork. We did receive the final plan application for this subdivision on May twelfth of this year, which included the payment and the final plan. And the applicant requests approval, and one lot of this two lot subdivision will be just over ten and a half acres. Well, actually, both will be just over ten and a half acres. Again, a two lot, simple subdivision. And the sketch plan is on page two, fifty one, it shows these two lots, it also shows their, you know, their, their distance or their relative to the South Fork Highway. And also Douglas Drive, because they're, they're right off of Douglas Drive. Location, this proposed subdivision is approximately seven miles southwest of Cody. It's one and a half mile east of South Fork Highway, it's on the north side of Douglas Drive. Currently, the parcel has an address of fifty seven Douglas Drive. As I mentioned, this is in the GR five zoning district. The lot sizes proposed are consistent with that zoning district. And on page three, figure two, you see what the, the parcel as it exists now, what it looks like. In terms of neighboring land uses, that's shown in figure three. Surrounding land uses are primarily residential, and there are some subdivisions to the south and southwest. And also to the northwest, there are some subdivisions. Terms of site characteristics, this property does have an existing residence, you can see that in figure three, and it does have a permitted small wastewater system. Terms of topography, it varies from north to south. The par, the parcel slopes gently down from the southern border to a lower lying area in the center of the parcel, where spring is located. And then slopes upward as you go north on the parcel. And the northern portion of the parcel is not irrigated, the southern portion is irrigated land, and currently being used as pasture. This property is not within a mile of any municipality, so municipal review is not required. Of course, this is the final plan, so there was no public hearing notice required. We've not received any public comments. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this at their April twenty first meeting. Some of their recommended conditions, they did have the requirements of, of meeting Lakeview Irrigation District requirements. And we did receive a revised review from Lakeview, amending the requirements in their original review. There were, another P and Z requirement regarding the spring, there was a spring on the property. And either permitted by the state engineer's office or does not need to be permitted. They told us that the spring is not required to be permitted by the state engineer's office. We do, yeah.
They're developing it, but is, are they developing it?
Well, they, they, my understanding is it's already developed. I, I do not remember the details of.
I mean, it's, it's not a need answer, it's just, it was just interesting to me that, that it wouldn't have to be permitted, I thought, if any wells or springs develop, it has to be permitted.
Yes, yeah, because I, Mr. Chairman, I don't know the answer to that. And, and it is developed because there was a little wellhouse around that spring. However, one of the conditions that P and Z had was. Since it's going to be two lots, should this be approved, you know, the, the percent distribution going to lot one and lot two is a condition that P and Z recommended. That condition is not been met yet. Platform view committee looked at this on May twenty fourth, there were some minor corrections and changes to the final plan. So we did get a corrected version on May twenty fifth. Beginning at bottom of page five, submissions for final platform view. Of course, we talk about the supporting documents, and we also talk about what needs to be on the final plan, those specifications. I will mention the subdivision improvements agreement is not required for this two lot subdivision. We have some findings of fact, and we have two recommended conditions, Mr. Chairman. And we're happy to answer questions you might have.
My only question is, why are, why is it showing staff recommendations as staff conditions? Past or the one just previous, when we get to that end, it says staff conditions. To me, the condition is a lot different than a recommendation. So if we approve this, which I have no problem approving it, I would like that changed to, and there's sort of a reason for it, to say it's big staff, staff recommendations as opposed to conditions. And I also second, I guess, the part of that, why is the farm ranch not, not be a part of this as well? It is surrounded by.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, you're talking about the bottom of page seven. So we have that titled just as, as, what is?
I think it's just a, a word that we need to be consistent with, conditions recommended by staff.
Well, well, is it, is that, was that? Yeah, I think it's just wording, because it says, the title is, the title is staff recommendation, but then it's, we recommend approval of this final plan with following conditions. So they're really, they really are, I guess, recommended conditions that we have for you to, for you to consider.
That's fine, right? I was gonna say, there's not a consistent one right before, it says staff conditions, full print.
Or Mr.
This one says staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's just more consistency when I write the staff report, and I'll be aware of more in the future.
And then the rest is back to question.
Yeah, you know, in our, so in, in our regulations, there's a couple places where it talks about that, well, I mean, Farm and Ranch Act, it talks about it one place in agricultural districts. It talks about another place where it's, where my understanding is it's, it's a condition for all final plans. So even though it's not on here, my understanding is that should be a note on the final plan. But we, and we don't have it as a condition, we're, we're trying to be consistent, I know we've had it before, but we don't have it this time, but it will be a, it will be a note on the final plan. So it's a final, and we don't have all the final, you know, there's, there's several final plan conditions, and we don't have them all listed here. Things that have to be stated on the final plan. And that is one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept, do I pronounce this right? B, simple subdivision, two sixty nine, final plan review with the change of wording from recommendations of staff to conditions and adding. Right format.
A note about the right format.
As a third condition.
Okay.
Then second it, is there further discussion? Close the favor?
I, I.
Close.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can we go and start with Mr. Chairman?
Right into the.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, the next item for your consideration, it's, it's another final plan, obviously, not a public hearing. This is for the Bellflower Simple Subdivision. The applicant is Blue Bell Properties. This property is located in, in the GRP zoning district of Fanning Area's Powell. We received the final plan application for this simple subdivision on May seventeenth. We didn't get, at that time, we, we received a final plan, we received a revised final plan on May twenty seventh, and you can see that in figure one. The applicant requests approval of this two lot simple, one lot will be three acres, one lot will be six point eight one acres. All these will be for residential use. Obviously, we classify this as a simple subdivision, we feel appropriately. On page two, figure one, you see this, the final plan of this simple subdivision. Again, this is along Lane eight and a half. It's, this location is approximately two miles, two point two miles east of Powell. Again, it's on the north side of County Lane eight and a half. This parcel has an address of five twenty seven, Lane eight and a half. I mentioned this is in the GRP zoning district, the lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. Neighboring land uses, you can see on page four, figure three. To the north of this property, it's primarily agriculture. To the south, it's primarily residential, and specifically a number of subdivisions on the south side of Lane eight and a half. Proposed lot one is vacant agriculture land, proposed lot two has one primary residence and four accessory structures. And there is a small, permitted small wastewater system located on this parcel. This property is relatively flat, however, it does slant somewhat down in elevation from west to east. This property is not within a municipality, so municipal review is not required. Public hearing, as I mentioned, is not required to final plan, we've not received any public comments. Planning and zoning reviewed this simple subdivision on April twenty first, they recommended approval, they have conditions. Number two was the long-term noxious weed control plan, that condition has been met. There was also a condition addressing water quality that at the time, there, if I remember correctly, that first analysis again. that at the time, there, if I remember correctly, that first analysis again had the presence of coliform. Water sample was done again, and no coliform was found. Does that sound right? Platform view committee met on May twenty fourth to look at this, there were some minor corrections and changes. As I mentioned, we did get a corrected final plaque. Beginning, or at the bottom of page five, we have all the submissions and conditions for final plaque, those things have all been met. Of course, we're, today we're doing the final plaque review. We have findings that, that we recommend you consider. We do have, we do recommend approval of this final plaque, and we do have one recommending condition, that's on page seven. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the only thing, and I don't care, as long as it's consistent. Consistent, and that is, I, you know, reading, reading the staff recommendations, like you said, with the following conditions, I guess, as long as those are the conditions, I mean, it's clear that these are things that have to be done. I'm good with that, and we are going to put the right, what a right farm ranch on it, or is it just going to be known that it's going to be done? So, that, I guess, my question, are we going to have it sometimes, or sometimes not, or what?
It's not on there, as it can be. Yeah, yeah. And Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. You know, again, I, I would say no, because it, like, like I said before, there are a number of things that have to be on, according to our regs, that have to be on the final plaque. We don't, we don't list all those as a conditions. But yeah, we will be consistent going forward, I'm not sure which, which way we'll go. But we will be consistent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my biggest concern is the fact that you have all these subjects going out in rural area, the first time that some farmer dropped their family to a property, and the council sheriffs disone, and things they have every right to, their neighbors bother. That's what this nineteen ninety one White Farm Ranch Act is, or protect that culture in a way that we work and do here. So if it's not needed on a condition, I, I'm good with that. I just see it sometimes, sometimes I don't, so I don't know whether it's a condition, and sometimes it's not a condition. That's my concern.
Not to say that a farmer rancher would ever bitch about something, but I think the neighbors listen. I, I think if, if we know that this has already been taken care of, and then the conditions are part of it, I don't see what has to be under staff recommendation. Of course, you go back to conditions or recommendations, P and Z doesn't, really doesn't, I mean, their conditions are not, I have clarity, it all comes from county commissioners. So basically, their recommendation to us, and I think we should follow their recommendation. So as far as conditions, that's not really in, in the P and Z's vernacular, really, for them to say, this has to be done. Their recommendations aren't county commissioners, so. No, but I understand where Commissioner Teal is coming from, it's just a discrepancy in the wording that's being used. In one report, it says, we propose you approve this with the following conditions. We propose you approve this with the following recommendation. Instead, we just need consistency, I know, I know where you're coming from, you're saying we've approved this with the following recommended conditions. So all we need is just consistency throughout there, and I, I agree, I'd like to, I'd just like to see, you know, these are conditions for approval. Let me do that. Anyone else, anything else, any more questions for staff on this?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say on our, in our regulations, the, for when it's appropriate and not, agricultural notices, if a property is in an area of historic agricultural use and lies within the agricultural overlay district, that language has to go in there. If it's in an ag overlay, it has to, but it doesn't mean it can't on other ones.
Right, and, and when, if I may, when do you determine, who determines the ag overlay district? And/or whether the, like the distance between a three yard shirt that this is surrounded on three sides by agriculture, just sort of.
We look at that when we do the staff report, we pull the overlay district up and see if it's in there or not. If it's surrounded by it, doesn't mean it's in it.
Even if it's, but if it's not in overlay district, you can't argue that this thing is surrounded by.
Well, this one actually is in the overlay district.
Okay.
Yeah, the one.
But it's not in there, so.
Yeah, and what they're saying is, is that condition is required. It doesn't even matter, it doesn't even matter if it's in this or not, it's required. When you questioned earlier on, over there on Douglas, even though it's historical ag, I do not believe that one in Douglas is an ag overlay district. So that would be, that would be a discretionary application of that, and that's something we ought to pay attention to, you know, moving forward. Because we have the right to say, put it on there. But these that are on the, in an actual ag overlay district, it's, it's required, it has to go on. I am.
I would give that we approve the final plaque of Bellflower simple subdivision with the condition.
Then seconded, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Those. All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Last up, we have the Winchester major subdivision, phases four and five, final plaque.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant for these two phases of this final plaque are T J R Ventures. This property is located in how planning area, the zoning district of GRP. And the requested action, Jeff Sheridan is working on behalf of T J R Ventures. He submitted a final plaque for getting this to phases, phases four and five of Winchester major. That occurred on, that submission occurred on January seventh of this year. Phase four includes a creation of lots ten through sixteen, and phase five includes the creation of lots seventeen through twenty three. You can see those in figure one, and the final plaque, also you can see that, and that's shown in figure two on page two. Or it should be, it's not a number, but it should be page two. And, Mr. Chairman, the location of this is, this subdivision is, it's approximately one and a half miles south of Powell. It's south of lane eleven and west of road eight. You can see that in figure three. In terms of, there's been, obviously, there's been phases one, two, and three before this, those have all been approved of final plaques. I won't, I won't read all that, I'm just going to read some of the conditions, try to read some of the conditions or conditions that have been met in regard to these phases. So, on conditions of resolution twenty fourteen twenty five, which was the approval of this preliminary plaque, first of all, Public Works, they had conditions, again, they've all been met. They had conditions that the two roads, spur lane and wagon box lane, are built to county standards. And county engineer has confirmed that they have did. And they've inspected the subdivision improvements agreement, or subdivision improvements, those have all been approved by Public Works. Public Works also issued right-of-way permits for boots for lane and wagon box lane off County Road Eight. Terms of underground water, condition was water, electricity, bone of gas extended to reach lot. Northwest indicated that installation inspection of their aspects of the project are complete. A water line has been extended down boots for and wagon box lane to reach the lots. Guyland light and power indicated that power is, is complete. Bone service is available from TC West and Horizon. M D U indicated that work has been complete. So to our understanding, Mr. Chairman, all the utilities have been made adjacent to each of these lots. And it's all consistent with the subdivision improvements agreement. Subdivision improvements agreement has, has been approved, to our understanding, it's been approved by everyone who needs to be approved by. State board of control has indicated their acceptance of the detachment of water rights for these two phases. There was a pre-application meeting for this subdivision, occurred on January seventh of this year. Final plaque fee five hundred dollars has been paid. We did receive the application on January seventh. Garbage disposal is available through private companies, fire protection is available through Fire District One. And we, there is a note here that a fire hydrant is not required for the subdivision. Postal service is available, school bus stops are available. Both of those things were done during phase one, and just basically known for the entire subdivision. We know of no hazards, no landslide, steep slopes, or rockfalls. If I remember correctly, there is a potential for high water tables. The D Q, they did provide a letter of no adverse recommendation for the entire Winchester subdivision when phase one was being approved. Ag impacts, again, you know, you've seen these paragraphs before. There is a long-term notches weed management plan that addresses weed control, there is a drainage plan that's been approved. Shoshone irrigation district has made, they have some conditions they would like to see fulfilled. Covenants and a homeowners association agreement are in place. I talked about the state board of control. I don't have, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else highlighted. At, at the back of our staff report, we do have some findings, and we do have one condition that we are recommending. And that's just the standard condition. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Teal.
I got the one, the same one. So is, am I missing somewhere on here where, does it show whether it is an ag overlay district or not?
You know, that is a good question. And to be honest, I have not been intimately involved with this subdivision as I, as I have been with other ones.
I have a problem with, I'm back to the same old thing, though, because you have all agriculture to the west of it. So are we applying the ninety one right to Farm and Ranch Act as a condition or not? You said we could automatic if it's an ag overlay district.
I believe on this one, it, this, it is, it is on this final plaque. That notice is on this final plaque. So we are, my understanding is, my understanding is that we're, that we are putting that condition on all final plats. Because I remember reading, I know Patty just looked at the appendix that talked about that condition only being in an ag overlay district. But I am sure there's another place in our regs where it talks about ag impacts, we have a section. And I believe there it says all final plaque should have that statement.
One right, right, on the other agenda, but I didn't, I didn't even know anything about it until a year ago, and it was, it was put in in nineteen ninety one, and we started using it here a year ago, and it's, I think it's a great idea.
It is, it is on.
So what is that? What is that, that ag overlay?
Well. In a nutshell, basically, if you sell a house in the back of the East, they can't call a sheriff and say, hey, you sprayed weed or anything. Hey, two and one, you have a right to fuck your neighbor. If you are adjacent to a field, has a right to farm in the, I don't know the exact details, but I'm assuming that's what it is, Jeff. You can't shut down the old field for digging bees at three o'clock in the morning.
I get it, yeah, that's part of living in the country.
I don't, I don't think it's a hangup issue, but I just.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, there's some folks moving this direction, that it might be, and so that's why it's, it's preemptive strike against any, you know, any impacts on ag. Okay? Well, you know, we, we abandoned the water rights and stuff on it, so, you know, that. Address that issue.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the Winchester major subdivision phases four and five.
Seconded, moved and seconded, further discussion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, once again, phones, back to that again, TC two S Prime, they can provide phone service. I wish we could check on internet instead of, you know, you can plug in a telephone, which you can plug in a museum now. It'd be nice if this were changed to actual internet instead of telephone. Just about, you know, for future, look at that.
Okay, further discussion, all those in favor?
I.
Those, those carries. Thank you, Patty, thank you, Teal.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Can this get signed now, or can we leave it with you, the plaque, the final plaque?
Yeah. I gotta step. Staff, staff, you guys need to look at that final plaque before I sign it.
Yeah.
You guys.
They come on in, and then they can sign it when they're done.
All right.
Yeah. We have someone moving, yeah? How about that, okay, well, we're moving.
Okay, I, yeah, see her.
So we're gonna go ahead and move Ann Marie McHale. So we're gonna go ahead and move Ann Marie McHale.
I really felt that she didn't have an agenda anywhere going into it. Of the three, I thought that she interviewed best. I don't know any of the three personally. So I'm just throwing that out. I just, I felt that she interviewed very well and certainly had the right answers.
Well, I'd see her as a very, very strong candidate. I also see the, her being able to, you know, in pulp as well. Fit on other boards. It's, I'm having a, a time, a time deciding between Paul and Anne Marie.
If I could, I would agree with that. I'd let mine out. I know Paul for years. He's a, he's a great guy. He's having super dough. And I mean, he would fit like in, like as well. But I was very impressed with the way Anne Marie handled it. And I, I think she would be a really big breath of fresh air.
Sitting on that board with them through all the meetings and stuff, I would, I like, too, there's no question, but I have one for Anne Marie. And she does a great job. But I think in thinking about the other people in the room that I work with on that board. I like her enthusiasm and her energy. Well, so I'll probably go with this correctly. Older people on the board, working around the community. And I think her enthusiasm will help.
I like Anne Marie. I think Paul was, said he was a whole fascinating authority. Maybe with the, the comment is wrong, but you do have to speak up on a test on some of those boards. So especially with the library one. And I think, yeah, Anne Marie would certainly hold her own to the people that I know on that library. I will say this, because I sit on that stampede board that, and I would insert with him at all, but that is a board where you do speak up. There is, there's Yellen Cusson, and he said it's, and he, he, I'm sure he held his own down on that board.
Yes, he would.
But that's my two cents. So, I'm here in motion.
You know, if I'm gonna make one other comment, don't take this wrong, because I know Paul and I really like him. I think he do it after the show. But he heard about it from Pat. Pat can be very persuasive.
Yes.
I have my way. Whether his heart's really in one or another.
He applied for it before. He applied for it before, years ago.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
Yeah, he said that he wants to be on that board.
First time I move to point Anne Marie.
I'll second that. We'll second it. Are there any discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Can you let them know? Thank you, Susan.
All right.
I think he would have just.
That's what I was saying.
Right now, that was a real thought.
What about the museum board? It'd be great for Paul. I was looking for one. There he is. Hold on, we can't have a motion there. Oh, look how bad.
Oh, sorry.
Does that check for me?
You must, you must have been on vacation.
This is your chance.
Yeah. It's kind of weird.
You've been somewhere where it's been sunny more.
Yeah. Oh, here. Wait till tomorrow. I hope ninety-four by then.
Well, next up, it's bittersweet, but we've got, we're gonna honor Rod Neters for how many years?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight years working for Park County. His last position for the last past several years has been foreman for the Cody office. And I just think that heartfelt from all of us that we sure appreciate what you've done over there. And we're damn sure gonna hate to see you go. So, I wanted to thank God.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Chairman, I got, I got something I'd like to say.
Everyone, are we gonna have something to say?
Maybe. No, I just, I just wanted to say, you know, I've gotten it over on. No, I just, I just want to say, you know, I've gotten to know Ron since I became a commissioner. And become friends with you, I hope. And I just want to thank you for all your years of service in county. We're really gonna make you my friends. Thank you.
Brian Edwards.
I'd just like to say, you know, thirty-eight years is a long time. And, you know, I've known Ron for about seven of those, so not a lot of them. But, you know, I, I think every organization, construction crew, whatever it is, needs that guy that, you know, will smash through the boundaries and just go get it done.
Runway Ron.
Runway Ron. Yeah, Ron's that guy.
We do that.
You know, you think about, you know, Squaw Creek, you know, the Ice Bridge. Just, you know, one thing after another, those kinds of things that are gonna happen, it's Ron's that guy. You know, the guy who get out of the way and he takes care of it, gets it done. So that I'm gonna miss for sure and, and gonna miss you, you know, miss working with you. He's done a lot for Road and Bridge and, and big shoes to fill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mangle. I, I meant, a long time ago, I've been trying to throw the top ball in the first place. It's always coming up on my head. I couldn't see you, Jen. But I really didn't think he had a job. He was playing top ball.
I should have.
We were the reason that he would show up on over some days. I've known him for a long time. And right when I started here, then I quit, it's like, oh, hey. I knew somebody working for the county and I'm, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll see.
I'm not knowing the whole thirty-eight years as I was here when he came. I'm grateful, really appreciate what he's done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have my run as a chair. I, I thank you, I do. I mean, I don't know how you, how you did it for thirty-eight years, to be honest with you. You know, I haven't known, I haven't been commissioner that long, but I have worked around Ron somewhat in the one form of capacity from the private sector for quite some time. And he will be missed. There's, we don't, I used to look at my grandfather as an idol because that operator doesn't exist anymore. And you know what I thought about when they, they operate from above with this hut, when not achieved. With technology today, it's a, it's a different breed. There's still a few left, but you're gonna be missed, that's for sure. Thank you.
You guys got anything to say on this, or go in or get the hell out of here?
Let's go eat.
I do.
Yeah.
That's what they're gonna do.
No, I enjoyed my time here. It was educational. The people I got, you know, brought in, I learned a lot from. I learned a lot from everybody here. It's been good. I didn't think it was gonna be this hard to quit. I thought it was gonna be a rough way and it'd be fine, but it's been tough for me, I thought.
Provisional employee?
Definitely. You've been snowplowing in this case.
I'll be in the teacher.
Well, we got, that's what I'd like to put, present to you. Do a, have pictures, I'm sure we're gonna need pictures, so. Turn this, and we gotta present that to you too.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's not that hard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Ron. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Yep. You'll see me again, I'm sure.
Well, I sure hope we can call you yesterday.
As I say, party Friday, boot bottle, five-thirty. Till, till who knows.
I'll be there.
Unfortunately, I can't make it. But I'll have one for you.
I'll have one for you.
I think you'll be right out there. Part of the reception here shortly. One more motion?
Move to adjourn.
Just adjourned. Move and second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.